We will move on. There are no items on the consent calendar, so we will move to the public hearings, hearing items. And will the clerk call the first hearing item, please?
Item 5.1 is 8767 Excelsior Road Map. It's project number PLNG 22041.
Good evening, Chair Singa, members of the Planning Commission, Joseph Dagrom and Associate Planner in the Development Services Department. Item 5.1 is the 8767 Excelsior Road Map. This project consists of a tentative parcel map that would subdivide one existing parcel into three new parcels. Each parcel will have a minimum lot size of at least two gross acres in size. Access to each of the parcels will be off of Excelsior Road through a proposed 25-foot-wide private road. Any future home construction will require compliance with the city's climate action plan measures for new single-family construction. The project site is located at 8767 Excelsior Road within the Elk Grove Rural Area Community Plan area. It's located on the eastern side of Excelsior Road, about 250 feet north of Sheldon Road. Current site conditions include a single-family home and an outbuilding that are proposed to remain. And there is a driveway just north of the halfway point of the property, off of Excelsior. I'll get into that more later, but that driveway is going to be removed as part of this project. So this is the tentative map. As I mentioned, the project proposes to create three lots, each two gross acres in size. All parcels will have access off of Excelsior Road through a 25-foot-wide private road. That driveway is located toward the southern side of the property. The existing driveway off of Excelsior Road connecting to the existing home, the outbuilding, will be abandoned. As I mentioned, the home and the outbuilding will remain. Those will be located on the new parcel, too. And I'll make note that, as a result of this proposed subdivision, the existing septic tank connected to the existing home will need to be abandoned as the septic system and the existing home will be located on separate lots. Staff has reviewed the tentative map against the city's requirements and has been found to be consistent in terms of lot size, lot width, and lot depth. So this project was routed to the Sacramento County Environmental Management Department. They have provided us with three conditions of approval in regards to the well and septic connections. So Condition 36 is requiring that the existing septic system located between Parcels 1 and 2 be abandoned under a permit issued by EMD prior to recordation of the final map. In addition, Parcel 2 must have a new septic system installed prior to the abandonment of the existing septic system. Condition 41 requires that lots, the new lots 1 and 3, install their own individual water wells in compliance with EMD's well permitting and inspection program requirements. And Condition 42, just the condition about each lot requiring installation of septic tanks. There is a future Class 1 multi-use path running north and south on Excelsior Road along the western side of the project site. That's the project frontage. The project does propose an irrevocable offer of dedication along Excelsior Road to accommodate the future 25-foot-wide trail consistent with the bicycle pedestrian trails master plan. This project was presented to the Trails Committee in September of last year. The committee did support the project as proposed. No further environmental review is required for the project under pursuant to State Sequel Guidelines, Section 15183. The project is consistent with the general plan and environmental impact report. So tonight, staff is recommending approval of the project subject to the findings and conditions found in the draft resolution. This concludes my presentation for this project. Staff and the applicant are available to answer any questions. Thank you.
Questions for staff? Well, I think, like most of my fellow commissioners, we had an excellent meeting with staff earlier this week. So at this point, I know for no questions. If there are any, we'll call upon you again, Joseph, in a moment. I will, at this point, declare the public hearing open and invite the applicant to speak.
Hi, my name is Dennis Sparksdale. I'm the owner of Clayborne Engineering on Elk Grove Florin Road. I don't have anything to add unless you have questions or comments or anything you want to know.
Any questions?
I have no questions at this time.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. One. The public comment opportunity is now open for all those who would like to speak. I do not see any, do we have any speakers? And there were no written comments, so, given that, I will close the public comment. And I gather there is no need for the applicant to respond because there was no public comment. And I will declare the public hearing closed and move to commission deliberations and action.
Commissioner Singa, I do thank staff for their briefing earlier this week. And it's pretty straightforward. I don't have any questions.
Any other thoughts?
No, sir.
Okay, in which case you have a motion on this agenda item.
Chair, I move to adopt a resolution finding that no further environmental review is required for the project pursuant to State Sequel Guidelines, Section 15183, and approve a tentative parcel map for the 8767 Excelsior Road Map Project, PLNG 22-041, based on the findings and subject to the conditions of approval included in the draft resolution.
Do we have a second?
Seconded.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. Thank you. With that, shall we move to the next item?
Item 5.2 is Stone Springs Estates. It's project PLNG 24015.
Good evening again, Mr. Chair and members of the Planning Commission, Joseph Dagrom and Associate Planner in Development Services. This is the Stone Springs Estates map project. The project consists of a tentative subdivision map to subdivide approximately 2.2-acre parcel into nine single-family residential lots. The project also proposes a design review for subdivision layout. No home construction is proposed at this time, but any future home construction is subject to the climate action plan measures for single-family units. The project site is located on the northern side of Stone Springs Drive, approximately 300 feet west of Bradshaw Road. You'll see on the aerial, and I'll get into it as part of the project history, there are street sidewalk curb and utility improvements on the property. It is surrounded by residential development in all directions. So a little bit of project history. Initially, this project was approved by the City Council on March 22, 2006. I won't get into each of the individual items, but you'll see that legislative extensions and extensions allowed by the Subdivision Map Act extended the life of this project all the way till September 22 of 2023. The subdivision improvements, as you saw on the aerial in the previous screen, previous slide, were completed pursuant to the approved map and design review for the nine lots. Several items necessary to receive final map approval were not completed, and the tentative map expired. So tonight, the applicant is requesting a new tentative map so the project can move forward onto the final mapping process. Here's an exhibit of the expired map. You'll notice that there are 11 lots shown on the map. Pursuant to the now repealed East Elk Grove specific plan, they were conditioned for nine lots. So as part of the final map, they would have been required to revise their map and show nine lots. And the image to the right shows the proposed nine lots. This is a street view of the existing conditions. You'll see that the roadway, the sidewalk, the curb gutter, and utility improvements are in, as well as the curb ramps for accessibility. So a little bit more on the tentative subdivision map itself. They are proposing nine lots. Staff has reviewed the project against the development standards of the zoning code and found the lots to be consistent with the minimum lot size and minimum lot dimensions. So as part of this project, because the improvements were constructed back in 2013 and already accepted by the city, this application requires two design exceptions, which have been reviewed and approved by the Public Works Department. The first design exception is the minimum right-of-way width of 42 feet for minor residential streets. As constructed, the right-of-way width is 40 feet. The project layout is consistent with the existing street widths throughout the adjacent subdivision. It was reviewed by the Fire Department, and they've accepted the variance from the street width standards. And then the second one is the sidewalk ramp and accessibility improvements. As approved and constructed from 2013, they constructed single ramps. The current standard is dual ramps. The project is exempt from SEQA pursuant to State Sequel Guidelines, Section 15332. This is the infill development exemption. So tonight, staff is recommending approval of the project subject to the findings and conditions of approval contained in the draft resolution. This concludes my presentation. I am available to answer any questions. Thank you.
Questions for staff? I guess, again, thank you for your presentation, Joseph. I guess it's clear, and between that and the meetings we all held with you earlier this week, there are no questions at this point. If there are any, at a later point, we'll call upon you. I will declare the public hearing open and invite the applicant to speak.
Mr. Chair, I've notified the applicant several times about this meeting, and I've gotten zero response about their attendance this evening.
I guess the applicant has left it to your broad shoulders to carry them through this one, then. So with that, I will open the public comment opportunity. Do we have any speakers on this? No. And given that nobody signed up, I will close the public comment opportunity. And there is no need for the applicant to respond because, A, there was no comment, and B, the applicant isn't here. And I will declare the public hearing closed. So we therefore move to commission deliberations and action. Do any of the commissioners have anything to add to this at this point? Otherwise, I would appreciate a motion on the agenda item.
Actually, I had a question I should have asked it while Joseph was up. Is there a cost to the applicant for each of these delays? Do they have to resubmit any fees to the city for prolonging it from 2006?
They're at the final map phase. I think they have everything that they need. I believe, if I'm not mistaken, the engineering department might be able to move the submitted final map application forward with what they've already have.
Okay.
Is that correct, TJ?
I think, are you referring to the extensions that happened over the last nearly 20 years?
Right, so there were some legislative extensions, and there were some extensions that were asked for, looking, looks like, from the applicant. And I was just curious, did their initial application fees, were they 2006? Were they based on 2006 application fees? Because it's been 18 years.
So the original, the entitlement fees are paid through the entitlement process, through basically your planning commissioner, city council hearing, whatever it takes to get through that initial design approval, if you will, the tentative map approval in this case. And so they paid all that back in 2006 to get the map initially approved. There are no fees associated with the state legislative extensions. Those happen by right and apply statewide, and so we just simply recognize those extensions in our system. It's an administrative matter for us with no direct cost to the applicant. If they come in and request an extension, there is a fee associated with that. It's fairly straightforward. You go to the zoning administrator and seek the extension. And as long as it's consistent with MAP Act, they're typically given, unless there's this extenuating circumstance, something about the project or conditions, or city standards may have changed. In this case, the applicant had gotten the project through. Traditionally, we see projects that will actually record their map and actually create the subdivided lots and provide surety for the improvement of, say, the public street system, gutter, sidewalk, streetlights, and all that. That is one avenue to do it. It's not the only avenue the MAP Act gives. Your other option is you can do the improvements first without posting security and then have your map recorded. The applicant, in this case, chose that direction. Unfortunately, just didn't go through the clock in a time-effective manner. So with the improvements out there, staff is supportive of moving forward with the new tentative map at this time. And there's a fee associated with the new approvals tonight, too.
Very good. You got to the crux of my question. I'm ready to move forward with this.
Okay, if we could have a motion on the item, please?
So Chair Singa, I move to adopt a resolution finding the project exempt under SEQA pursuant to State Sequel Guidelines, Section 15332, and approve a tentative subdivision map and design review for subdivision layout for the Stone Springs Estates Project, PLNG 24-015, based on the findings and subject to the conditions of approval included in the draft resolution.
Do we have a second?
I second.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none? The motion carries. Thank you. Will the clerk please call the next agenda item?
Item 5.1, I'm sorry, 5.3 is Coral Blossom Apartments. It's project APLA 24-001.
Good evening, Mr. Chair and commissioners. My name is Kira Killingsworth, and I am the planner on the Coral Blossoms' appeal. The appellant appealed the zoning administrator's approval of a minor design review under SB 35 and a density bonus for reduced parking and concession incentives. The original application was for a new multi-unit residential complex for affordable supportive housing. It'd be 81 units, three stories tall, and have onsite improvements with lighting, landscaping, and parking. The project is located at 8484 Elk Grove Florin Road. It is zone high-density residential, RD 30, and is part of the general plan Housing Rena Site. It was reviewed by staff and was determined to be eligible for the SB Senate Bill 35. Staff had found that it met the criteria for Senate Bill 35 as well as the city objective standards. Some of the criteria to kind of run by, but for more detail, is part of the zoning administrator's staff report in Attachment 3. But some of the criteria is affordable housing? Is it multifamily? Is it zone residential? Does it meet the city's objective standards? Is it located in a wetland, a fire hazard, an earthquake zone? And again, more information is on Attachment 3 of the zoning administrator's report. On June 17, the zoning administrator also determined that the application complied with the objective standards and met the SB 35 criteria and was determined that it can go through the ministerial review and approve the minor design review with the density bonus and the concession and incentives. After that, there was a timely appeal that was received by city staff on June 25 by the appellant. And the grounds of appeal were based off the city's prior denial, sorry, of another project, Oak Rose Apartments. Oak Rose Apartments was an Old Town location. It was a separate application. This Coral Blossom is an individual project standalone. It has the rights to go through the process and go through the SB 35 criteria, and that's what was reviewed. It was reviewed separate, was not compared to Oak Rose. Oak Rose also was withdrawn, and the applicant submitted an application at this location at 8484 Elk Grove Florin Road. With that, staff found it exempt from SEQA as a minister of review of 15268. And staff recommends that the planning commission find that it's exempt from SEQA, as well as deny the appeal and uphold the zoning administrator's approval of the minor design review, density bonus, and incentives and concessions for the Coral Blossom project and that it meets the criteria of SB 35. There was a green sheet that was submitted to the commission. The green sheet was information on the website. It did not have the resolution for denial, and staff was giving you the resolution for requesting denial of the appeal. Also, there was two written comments that were submitted to you as well regarding the project as well. And the appellant is here, as well as the applicant, if you have any questions. Thank you.
Questions for staff?
I'll hold my questions for later.
Okay. There may be questions in a while, so at this time, I'm going to declare the public hearing open. I gather there is no applicant per se. So I'm going to open the public comment opportunity. And before I call on... There is the applicant?
There is the appellant.
Oh, that is?
Yes.
Okay, the appellant, sorry.
I believe she wants to speak.
Okay, then I will invite the appellant to come forward and speak, please.
Good evening. Thank you for giving me this opportunity to come before you. I'm Liz Marshall, and I'm here to appeal the Coral Blossom project. And as I've told the city manager, I've never spoken at a city council meeting, and I've never gone to a planning meeting, and I've never had the need. But I'll say, as a wife and a daughter of U.S. Marines, I've lived a lot of different places in my life. And I'll have to say, Elk Grove City Government takes the cake. So who are the Elk Grove City decision-makers on this? Well, we have a mayor who abuses her power and is running unopposed. We have a city council member with a DUI and no honor to step down. We have one city council member who cries at city council meetings and one who posts himself in Barbie pajamas. The city manager can't be transparent, but I now realize that's his job. We have a city attorney and a planning board that neglect their duties to follow state law out of some misguided loyalty to the mayor. But let's not forget the unelected sixth city council member who gets preferential treatment and insider information. And my favorite, all those fine Elk Grove citizens in Old Town who show no shame in tossing this project for fear of their children, elderly, and businesses on us. Awesome people. All while, the city proudly posts the $9.2 million it costs city taxpayers to oblige these Old Town folks. That is outrageous. And I have to say, I have zero confidence in city Elk Grove leaders. Now, to add insult to injury, you say Coral Blossom must be approved because otherwise you would be breaking fair housing laws. Well, isn't that something? Because those are the very laws you broke to move Oak Rose to Coral Blossom, which resulted in a $9 million lawsuit that got settled at the city taxpayer's expense. Now that is rich in contempt to us. So Elk Grove had an obligation to the state to provide permanent supportive housing, but it didn't. So I realize that that is a touchy subject for all cities. But SB 35 was passed because cities like Elk Grove weren't fulfilling their obligation. More proof of poor city leadership. Accelerant Housing came into town and purchased the Elk Grove Boulevard site, catching the city off guard. And then the games began. Short version? Accelerant went for permits, and the city used every excuse it could come up with to deny the project, all in violation of state law. And then in July of '22, the mayor denied Oak Rose Apartments based on her bias and misinformation from Old Town residents. Elk Grove was sued for violating fair housing laws and SB 35, not only by Accelerant, but by the state. So what's the city do? Stall, 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 trying to find a way out. In September of '23, city staff came back and recommended that the Oak Rose Apartments be approved. But instead of approving it, the city council and the mayor deferred any action. It is in the legal papers that the mayor and the city council were unable to stand up to the public who opposed the project despite the city staff's approval and the city's written admission of legal liability. So all while this was going on, the city acted in bad faith by trying to entice Accelerant to other properties. There was the Big Horn Bruceville property, and then the even bigger Elk Grove Florin. More bad leadership. Of course, Accelerant took the settlement that the mayor gave them. She gave them the moon. Not only did they get the $9.2 million, but there's nothing to show for it. Outrageous. And as if 67 units is unacceptable in Old Town, how come 81 units are being built in our neighborhood? The concession was given so the mayor could get out of the mess that she made with no consideration for our neighborhood. The settlement doesn't change the fact that Elk Grove violated state law. It doesn't change that the mayor was biased in her decision-making. Doesn't change her arbitrary decisions that cost the residents $9 million, and there's no accountability for her. None. Anybody else who lost or wasted $9.2 million going to still have a job? Incredible. And all of this was done, all of this was done to save Old Town. Some people think Old Town could be the next Gaslight Emporium. Big dreams to go with the zoo. I'm going to San Diego next week, and I guarantee you I'm not going to feel like I'm in Elk Grove. San Diego has so much more to offer, unfortunately, than Elk Grove. Beaches, sports, the Navy, college students. So Elk Grove, not so much. Elk Grove, Old Town is the past. Older people go to Old Town. Younger people don't go to Old Town. They go to Sacramento for the bars and the clubs, for sporting events and concerts, for shopping and fine dining. Planning Elk Grove's future through Old Town is a losing proposition. So Elk Grove is supposed to grow, maybe double in the next 10 to 20 years. Smart city development is crucial for success. I am sure you're all working hard, trying to get the job right, but obviously, there's more work to be done. It is vital that city staff stand up and follow state law, no matter how much pressure they might be getting from outside sources. And while I don't know when we... And while I don't know Lynn Wheat, I've seen her at some meetings, and I will tell you, she seems to really care about Elk Grove and really care about the developments that are going on here. And I believe she would be a much better unelected sixth city council member than the one you guys are all listening to. So the city attorney won't be upfront on what the city settled with the state. Between more lawyer fees and whatever Rob Bontag got, because we know he got something, I'm sure it's adding up. So Elk Grove residents should be angry, but who gets mad when they don't know what's going on? So it looks like I have some time to figure out my next destination. That's one of the great parts of living in the USA. There's always somewhere else to go. Life is too short to live in a city where city leadership doesn't respect all its residents. But all my neighbors don't have the same options that I do. Moving, for some, can cost some real extreme hardship, and I guess the collateral damage just doesn't seem to matter. So in closing, I'll say, shame on all of you for going along with the mayor's reckless behavior, and shame on the mayor of Elk Grove for failing Elk Grove residents. If you really care about Elk Grove, you should get out of the back rooms and shed a little sunshine on what you're doing. Mistakes are made. We all make them. But like I've always told my children, when you make a mistake, you go back and fix it. And that's what we need. We need this fixed, not just let her get away with whatever random choices and bias she decides to use. Thank you. Any questions or comments?
Thank you. Okay. At this point, I will open the public comment opportunity. I noticed that we have a number of speakers, so just as a reminder to ensure a fair process, each speaker will be allowed three minutes. At the three-minute mark, a buzzer will go off, and at 3:15, I'll ask you to wrap up. So thank you with that. Let me call the first speaker, who is Brenda Hurwick.
Good evening. My name is Brenda Hurwick. I am the owner of Early Beginnings Learning Center at 8940 Brown Road. I have concerns about the Coral Blossom project. I'm not sure how they are going to fingerprint-clear these parties, and how they are going to sustain the medical facility that they are going to be needing, or the policing of it, because already I have had, in the last month, probably three people trying to access our property and our building, and I have a black wrought iron fence to protect the children. I'm licensed for 92 children, and I have 10 teachers. And my concern is for the children and the staff's safety and the neighborhood. I bus to the public schools also, and there's a park across the street. We are just 800 feet away from Coral Blossom. I just don't see how this respectfully will work. I understand they need a place, but they need a place that is more closer to facilities that they need. We don't have those facilities. All we have is Bel-Air, the Dollar Store, gas station. That's it. We have no medical facility close to us or good light rail transportation. We're just a little, small rural area. So I would say I am totally against the Coral Blossom. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions?
The next speaker is Lily.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Lily. I'm living in Elk Grove from last 15 years, raising my family over here. So first of all, I have full sympathy with unhoused people, who we have some concern as a residents, too. So should we consider establishing a house project for the unhoused in close proximity to a preschool and a community park, elementary schools, other schools? We are currently dealing with this issue related to homelessness in our community. There are daycares and preschools in that area. As a speaker before me, she mentioned has rapidly complained about homelessness issue to the Elk Grove law enforcement. The response time from the Elk Grove place is typically between eight and nine minutes to our location. Currently, they advise us to contact the non-emergency line for any homelessness-related concern, which takes forever to reach us, because that area's traffic congestion is already bad. So the next homeless housing project close proximity to our residential area raised significant safety and security concerns to our families and kids. Placing this kind of place in our community may displace current residents and affect property values. Many of family in our area have invested their lives in building a community that is not only safe, but also thriving. Introducing this kind of places may lead to a decline in property values, which affect everybody's financial security and overall economic health of our neighborhood. The existence of housing for the homelessness can occasionally result in higher rate of crime, people hanging around aimlessly, and other issues that disrupt the peace of our neighborhood. There is strong evidence that the presence of a place like within 100 meter is associated with an increase of property mischief crime by 56.35%. Living in this kind of neighborhood will increase mental stress and anxiety, fear, and sleepness of current residents. So this is our humble request to our city council, planning commission. Please reconsider this project somewhere else where it will not affect, impact the lives of the current residents. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Chad Sui.
Good evening, everyone. Thanks for the fellow residents to be here to say no to Coral Blossoms. Thank you very much. We are here to say no to Coral Blossom. The project is planned for the 8484 Elk Grove Florin Road in the close proximity to our neighborhood. I'm here to voice my concern on the behalf of Silverberry and nearby communities about the Coral Blossom project. We recognize the necessity for such facilities, but hereby, I'm highlighting several reasons to reconsider this project site. Number one, we all support Liz Marshall's appeal against the Coral Blossom project. We came to know that, like, the city had made a settlement with the state, and we don't know what kind of settlement has been done with for the lawsuit with the developer and the state attorney, or with the state. We would like to know the settlement, and we came to know through the appeal dismissal letter, which I got from Liz, like, the city is now ready to comply with the SB 35. Okay, the city council has been violating SB 35 for years, rejecting the supporting housing project in 2022, and then rejecting the project of Oak Rose Apartment Project at Old Town Project Site, and disqualifying the Oak Rose Apartment, and spending millions of taxpayers' dollars on lawsuit to justify their discriminatory and biased decisions, and stand firm against the SB 35. As a taxpayer, we expect transparency from the city council. We want the city council to publish the settlement they had with the state attorney and the project developer for the Coral Blossom Project and the Oak Rose Apartment Project, because Coral Blossom Project is not a separate project. It was a project with the settlement of Oak Rose Apartment. We want to see the document and the score metrics you have adopted to approve the Coral Blossom Project and reject the Oak Rose Apartment or any other location for this project. The 8484 Elk Grove Florin location lacked adequate space for the project, but the city acquired the adjacent private property to transform it into a suitable location for the project. Elk Grove Florin is located in a corner of the town, far from the medical services police station. If your goal is to assist the homeless people, it should be considered at a more central location, where, central location of the city, where all the essential facilities are accessible. Additionally, where the $9.2 million has gone, achieving nothing, what were the sources of those funds, which has been incurred over the past two years due to the lawsuit and frequent changes in decision regarding the project site? Furthermore, there are 31 locations listed in the RHNA list. Some of those locations may be the best suitor for such kind of facility. These locations can provide the necessary resources to the homeless people.
I will have to ask you to wrap up, please.
Sure. So my question is for the mayor, since she's not here, and Spee is our council member, they are representing us. I'm eager to hear from both of them, because we voted for her and Mr. Spee. We want them to protect our right and interest. To wrap up, I respectfully request the city council to reevaluate the proposed site for the homeless housing project. Let's prioritize both compassion for those in need and safety.
Thank you. Again, please, I would appreciate holding each speaker to hold to three minutes, if you can. The next speaker is Lynn Wheat.
Good evening. My name's Lynn Wheat, and I want to give a little background. I've been a long advocate for better planning within our city, and I've been participating with our city government and, in particular, land use planning since we became a city. I started documenting in between August of 2002 and December 2019. We had 63 general plan amendments and rezones. We did more amendments in 2021, and we did more amendments in 2022. But the interesting thing is, over time, law only allows general plan amendments four times a year, so we've been bundling our rezones and amendments to get more in, which brings us to where we are now. I've seen Elk Grove, all of Elk Grove, as my big backyard, and it really is very discouraging to me how we get to this point where we're having one neighborhood pitted against another, when as a community, we could have done such a better job of building. The first five years I attended meetings, I listened to our city council blame the county, that everything that was wrong with our city was the result of the county. Now what we're going to do is we're going to blame the state, that everything that's wrong with our city is a result of the state. Well, I'm here to tell you that previous councils rolled over our affordable housing so that the units kept building up and we weren't building them. Then we gave the developers a big break, and the fees that we collected were so low, it wasn't really reasonable to be able to do that. And so we got into buying land in hopes that we can have some affordable housing builders come in and build for us. Our developers within this region have told us what we're going to be, which is one subdivision after another subdivision of big box houses, nothing for first-time buyers, and it continues and continues. I'm here to say, I'll take responsibility. As much as I've spoken before the council and the planning commission, and involved with our general plan update, where I can tell you at the beginning of the meetings, there were 50 people. By the end of it, there were two of us that were commenting on our general plan. I just didn't have the stamina to get the messages out. We need to help our homeless here and our unhoused, whatever you want to call them, and we need to do it well. We don't need to hide them in the back. We need to build good communities, and how you do that is you involve the neighborhoods. You don't surprise them with things like this. You don't surprise future residents in Sterling Meadows that they're going to be living next to the zoo employee parking lot, or those that built out there didn't realize they were going to have a zoo and that they're going to be smelling animals, or those that bought homes by what is now our casino. We don't have good land use planning. Let's take responsibility of that, and let's begin to build economically diverse neighborhoods. I live here because of the people, because as one previous council member said, my heart's in the right place. My heart's getting a whole lot older, and it's very discouraging to me what we're leaving the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Suzanne Petchi.
Good evening. For the record, my name is Suzanne Petchi, and as you know, a longtime resident. I actually lived in a lovely subdivision behind Old Town when we moved here, and I actually shopped in a very viable Old Town with a department store, the post office, the courthouse, the library, the lumberyard, the wonderful restaurant we all met at and ate at. And it was extremely viable. I know the parking lots were filled, the roadways were filled. I've lived here long enough to see so much money, taxpayer money, put into constantly trying to improve Old Town to a point where I don't believe it's that viable anymore. There is no street parking. A lot of the chiropractors, doctors that were in the medical buildings are gone, and now we're trying to replace it with something different. So regarding Oak Grove, I actually thought it was a good location for that type of a facility. I shop at Bel-Air Market across the street. I use CBS Market there. There are a lot of services, doctors in walkable distance, and some of those business buildings still. And I really didn't understand the money that was spent on this. I don't understand why staff waited for 90 days to say it was not a good location. Could have said it wasn't a good location a lot sooner. Could have notified the public. We all could have gotten out, spoken about it. That didn't happen. So now it's been moved to another location where there is no outreach, and I would think that you would expect that the public would have the same outcry and the same kind of disbelief that this kind of a way of operating is still continuing, and putting all of that money into making something, changing the location, when you're still facing the same issues with trying to work with the residents. I mean, that is what the city is for. It's not about the city. It's not about the mayor and the council. It is about representing our views and listening to them. So I really understand Coral Blossom. I just think that this is something that needs more outreach, like everything does. I think you'd find a lot happier public if you were more open, if you were more understanding of the differences in the old timers, the new timers, the culture, the diversity, all of us trying to work together to have a good community. And I think Coral Blossom is just another Oak Grove in another location. Probably not as good a location, and it cost us an awful lot to move it there. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Nicole Restmeyer.
Hello. I am an Elk Grove resident, but I'm also a board member of the Sacramento Housing Alliance, and so I wanted to actually come and speak in opposition to the appeal and support of the project. We have been advocating for additional affordable housing resources for the communities, making up the six-county region for 35 years, and have been, I think, involved somewhat in the back and forth over the Oak Grove project. And we have, I want to say, 2,600 units of extremely low-income and very low-income affordable housing that we need to build here in Elk Grove, particularly over the next retina cycle. And this project is actually additional units that we will be getting, and we need to, we really need to help our neighbors. I've been over to the Coles near... I've been over to the Coles near the site, and I've seen, you know, folks wandering into the street, people who desperately need services, um, and I just, you know, I would just say we, you know, we're, we're supportive of the project and we would hope to see that you reject the appeal, so, thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Jackie.
So I'm back. I first want to address this lady here. My house is right next to the Oak Rose lot, and I want you to know, my heart breaks for everybody out here.
Oh, would you please speak into the mic?
I want them to know that I am, I'm upset about the whole thing, because I just feel like it's been pushed down everybody's throats, no matter where they live. I've lived in Elk Grove for fifty years, and I don't know, you're shaking your head, I'm not sure if you're, you don't believe me, but at one of the meetings when they said they were moving it down there, I cried, and I told the man I was wanting to help you guys fight it. You obviously, okay, I'm sorry, I want her, I want them to know how passionate I am about this. I've lived in Elk Grove for fifty years, I don't think it's right that they're putting them in anybody's neighborhood, and it's very obvious to me that all of us agree that it's not fair. And if people want to blame somebody, they shouldn't be blaming old Elk Grove residents or anybody else, they should be blaming Newsome and Bonta, or whoever it is, that shoving this down our throats. We are taxpayers, we pay for this, we should have the right to vote where it goes. And we're all obviously worried about our children's safety, our safety, everybody's worried about, we all have a lot in common, all of us, that don't want it. It's, it's not fair, and I just, I wasn't gonna speak, but I'm here because I care. I'm not here to be a spy or a fly on the wall. Obviously, I care about what you guys are doing, I want you to know that I care. I, I want to fight it wherever. It needs to be put somewhere where it's not hurting taxpayers and their families. We are paying for this and we work hard for this. Then you, I, I, I don't know what, what else to say, it's just ridiculous that it's going to this. It's not, it's not right, it's not right for people, and I'm sure if any one of you lived close to either one of these properties, you would agree. I'm not sh- I said this before, I don't know where any of you guys live, but nobody wants it in their backyard, I'm sorry, nobody wants it in their backyard. I know Lynn, I've talked to her, we have a lot of things in common, but it's just not fair. I, I don't know what the answer is, maybe if you had meetings where everybody can discuss a good, a good place for it, I know this has already happened, but it, there's a lot of, like they say, there's a lot of something going on that's not right, that, you know, they, the builder can make all this money off of our town. It's like he did it on purpose, or she, or whoever it is, tried to put it in old Elk Grove, so they can get this bigger lot, and then they can get the lawsuit. It's a bunch of bullshit, I'm sorry, I'm so fed up with everything. I've lived here for a long time, since things were cute and simple, and like the lady that spoke over there, and I know it's not gonna go back to Leave It To Beaver, but it can if people work and care.
Thank you. Sunny, is there anybody else, do you have a blue card on anybody else?
No.
Okay. I guess there are no other speakers, so I will close the public comment period, and again, I will invite the appellant to respond if necessary.
Well, you hear it, you're our city leaders, we're asking you to, to do, well, first of all.
Let's, let's ask her to speak into the microphone.
Please come up to the mic if you don't mind.
I will agree, I, I probably shouldn't say this, but I will agree with this lady here, who doesn't want it in her backyard. And when I originally heard about this whole project, and it was going to Elk Grove Boulevard, I did think it was a dumb place for it. I come from the Bay Area, where there isn't much room, and these projects are put in neighborhoods, and I have seen them affect property values and the quality of life. But we live in Elk Grove, for God's sake, look at all the land we do have, and how about this, if the, I will say this, if the city had the gumption to tackle this project in a positive way, why couldn't we all share the burden of permanent supportive housing? Why couldn't every district find a spot where they could participate and be part of the solution? Why couldn't we, as a city, maybe come together in our districts to support our personal permanent supportive housing spot? Wouldn't that be great? Wouldn't that be something to show the state, working together to solve the problem, not only for our citizens, but also the people that are affected by this? We could do it that way, and we could still do it that way, but we gotta wanna do it that way, and not take the easy way out. There are spots on the RHNA, or if I'm getting that right, list. I drove around and looked at them myself. One of them was on East Stockton Boulevard next to a church. For goodness sake, what could be better than working with your neighborhood, a church, nonprofit, and making this a win-win for everybody and not just the mayor? We could do it if we want to, and wouldn't that show the state? Wouldn't that show Governor Newsome and Rob Bonta that Elk Grove is on the right track? Instead, we're in the newspaper as the city who can't do it right. Come on, let's take a chance, let's look at this and see if we can't actually work together and get this right.
Thank you. Okay, with that, I will declare the public hearing closed, and I will move to commission, commission deliberations and actions, and if you have any questions for staff, they are there to answer them. So the floor is open.
Um, I, I do have a question, and this is just for my own clarification on, uh, we've heard a couple of times about outreach, um, and Kira or somebody, if you could just kinda talk about what the process is, um, for reaching out to the communities in this situation.
So it's always a recommendation, it's not our requirement of outreach, but we do do a public hearing notice that's sent out to all the neighbors within five hundred feet, um, to let them know that there is a meeting coming up. So they were notified for the zoning administrator meeting as well as this meeting tonight.
Thank you.
Other comments or questions from commissioners?
One thing that was brought up, both by speakers in favor of the development and speakers against, was loitering. I should have asked if there was any mechanism for ensuring that people weren't loitering around in front, is there security, um, is there any enforcement in the, in the neighboring, surrounding community to keep people from loitering? I think one of the people that spoke in favor said they have noticed people near, near the Coles loitering in the parking lot there in need of service. Is there any, um, in the application, any consideration to, to loitering?
No, that's not something that the planning staff looks at.
Right.
It's a multifamily application, there is fencing around the apartment complex. Um, and as I know with the housing, they go through a process with the county, um, to be reviewed, and they have to go through a lease and comply with the lease.
Right, but even, even as such, i- this is, um, not a review of an application for the development, it's a review of the, um, appeal of the application and, and the ministerial governance over it via SB thirty-five.
Correct.
And I guess that raises the question, I think what, uh, I'm detailing what Vice Chair Fernandez said, I guess, we have to look under SB thirty-five and make sure that there aren't any objective standards with which this project is not in compliance, I guess that is the big issue.
Yes.
For us as a planning commission, because our jurisdiction is looking at SB thirty-five and this as a standalone application, and making sure there are no violations of the objective standards.
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Other questions, comments for staff, thoughts?
I live in that area, and I know that anywhere you put it, it's, people are gonna complain. I understand, uh, the lady who spoke, uh, I think it's Elizabeth Marshall. First of all, to tell your family, thank you for their service, I'm a Marine also, so, uh, but anywhere that, that you put it, but somebody else mentioned and was right, I think it was Jackie that said that we need to go to Sacramento and talk to them. It's not only locally, I mean, that comes from Sacramento, and it's really forced into any city to make the spaces for, for these type of living, and there's nothing really that the city can do. I mean, it's forced into us, and we just need to oblige.
But the city denied it already, in one spot, when it shouldn't have.
Well, thank you, I'm done.
It was viable there, the city staff said so, so that is the argument, we know it applies at Florin, but the city staff did not follow their obligation and approve it under SB thirty-five.
Thank you.
That's the problem.
Thank you, at this point, with your apologies, public comment is closed, so I will have to stick within commission deliberations if there are any further ones.
Yeah, knowing that this is a very sensitive issue, um, as the speakers were speaking, and I looked at the staff, um, report, um, SB thirty-five basically leaves us with answering seven or eight questions, in terms of whether this, um, project makes the eligibility. I listened for something for each one of these criteria that were listed, um, in the report, and I did not hear anything that, um, would indicate that, um, that the standards weren't appropriately applied. And with that, knowing how contentious it is, um, I agree with what my fellow commissioners have said, we're kind of bound by what the state law requires, and it's something that we could not, as this body, um, overturn that, um, required at this time. So, that's where we're at.
With that, do we have a motion?
Chair Singa, I move to adopt a resolution denying the appeal and affirming the zoning administrator's finding that the project is exempt, is exempt from environmental review pursuant to Public Resources Code Section one, two-one-zero-eight-zero-B-one, Government Code Section six-five-nine-one-three-point-four, and State Sequel Guidelines Section one-five-two-six-eight, and approval of the density bonus with reduced parking and concessions incentives and finding the project eligible for the Senate Bill thirty-five ministerial review process and approving the minor design review for the Coral Blossom PLNG twenty-four dash zero-one-one project.
Do you have a second?
I second.
All those in favor, please sign the vote, Singa.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries, thank you. With that, will the clerk please call the next item?
Do you want me to pause for?
Oh yeah, please, if you would, thank you, while we get things moving, thanks again. Why doesn't the commission take a five-minute break, so if you need to stretch or do whatever? We'll, it is now seven-eleven, we'll meet at seven-sixteen, or thereabouts, thank you. Okay, good afternoon, given everybody's here, I will reconvene the meeting and ask the clerk to move to item five-point-four, please.
Item five-point-four is the continued item for the residential lighting standards update.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, Commissioners, Kira Killingsworth, I'll be presenting you the lighting standards text amendments. Uh, this item has been, uh, before you a couple of times at different meetings, and last was July eighteenth, um, that was discussed, uh, with the text amendments that staff presented. Uh, some of the questions that were left were regarding the freestanding exterior lighting fixtures, the ban lighting for residential and temporary, oh, and then the language that was added, um, for maximum ninety consecutive days lighting used for seasonal decoration. And so staff, or commission had voted that this be continued to the next meeting, and we are, um, before you, um, with more, uh, with the same information as the last meeting. Uh, but just to kinda refresh your memory, um, staff had come up with text amendments for the lighting standards for residential and two-unit, uh, zones. As you know, chapter twenty-three-point-five-six, some of the, um, sections do remain as-is, and that was for multifamily and commercial, but there is some changes to the, to add for single-family unit and two-unit, and that would be with attached exterior lighting, freestanding exterior lighting, and exemptions, as well as lighting prohibited, um, some changes in then, uh, the definition of full cutoff, which is no light above ninety degrees. Staff had, uh, brought the text amendments for attached exterior lighting, that it should comply with that at the roof eve, as well as be installed, uh, that does not exceed sixteen hundred lumens, and again, full cutoff. At the last meeting, there was concern regarding the freestanding exterior lighting, uh, that language has not changed, um, still wanted to hear your, um, deliberation, so again, the, the freestanding exterior lighting was, if it's up to twelve feet, it's by right, and, but it shall, shall still be full cutoff and sixteen hundred lumens. Freestanding lighting that's twelve feet to twenty feet shall go through a minor design review process with, um, approval from the zoning administrator, which is a public hearing, and they must go through, um, a design review to, um, add a photometric plan that must be reviewed and comply with the standards. And they will have to get a public hearing notice, that be, uh, notifying all the neighbors within five hundred feet. In addition, we had exemptions, again, temporary, maximum consecutive days for ninety days, low, low voltage landscape lighting, outdoor string lighting, and, um, exterior lighting that was, uh, legally approved prior to, uh, these text amendments. Staff find that this, uh, these text amendments are category exempt from Section fifteen-oh-six-one and fifteen-three-oh-eight, and with that, staff recommends that you, uh, find that it's exempted from SEQA and approve the text amendments, uh, for, um, the amendments for chapter twenty-three-point-five-six, recommend to the city council, um, for the next stage of the amendments. There was a one written comment that was provided, um, to you from a resident, um, and if you have any questions, staff is available.
Questions for staff at this point?
One quick question, there was a written comment that shows a home with, which would appear to be floodlights mounted below twelve feet on the home and shining across a field. That lighting would not be prohibited, even with the new lighting standards, the trespass off of the property at the one lumen does not apply to lighting under twelve feet, is that correct?
So that lighting was attached to the home?
Correct.
So, if it's attached to the home, it would have So if it's attached to the home, it would have to be at the eve? And then again, it would have to be full cutoff and comply with the 1,600 lumens? So I don't know if that floodlight, they would have to show, if someone complained, the code enforcement will go out, they would have to show that it's 1,600 lumens.
Okay, so they would have relief from these two big floodlights if this provision passes?
Possibly.
Okay. Got it, yeah, they look like they're way over 1,600.
Yeah, just as a quick recap, please remember, we started this last December because we really lacked a single residential unit and two-unit residential exterior lighting standards. And this was a shortcoming in the code which we were trying to rectify. I have one quick question for you. I know we said exterior lighting fixtures with a height between 12 and 20 feet may be, may be approved, which is a big key word, through a minor design review. Could you please explain very briefly what it takes to go through a minor design review? Is there a cost associated with it? And how long, what is sort of very briefly the process?
Okay, so a minor design review, yes, there is a cost. The applicant would have to submit an application, a photometric plan, a site plan. And the costs at submittal, and this is the deposit, so it's based off of time and staff time and materials, it's $5,200. So, and then the standard time for a minor design review is, you know, three to six months. And again, it has to go to the zoning administrator with a public hearing.
And with a photometric study with an expert of some kind to provide that?
Yes, they would need to have a, an expert do a photometric plan.
So it is not the easiest thing to do? I mean, it's not a straightforward thing, you just increase the height of the pole and do a minor design review? Okay, that's just, I need clarification on that, thank you. Other questions? Okay. One thing I did learn at the, okay, let's move on. I will, at this point, at the no further questions for staff, declare the public hearing open. And I'll open the public comment opportunity. I know we had one written comment. Are there any speakers? Yes, I believe we have one speaker. So I would call the speaker Kathy Grudel to please come forward. Kathy? Okay, I'm having a hard time seeing. Okay. Did, did Ms. Pesci give you a card?
We have two speakers.
I have. Yeah, that's, no, I just have one showing up on my screen, so. Ms. Pesci, would you please come forward? And again, as a reminder, we have three minutes.
So for the record, my name is Suzanne Pesci, and I've lived here for 45 years. And 10 of it was in Old Town, when it wasn't real, wasn't a real Old Town. And the rest of it has been out in the rural area. So when the city became incorporated in 2000, those of us that lived here, the small population that lived in town, actually really got involved in the development of the general plan and the municipal code. We had huge, huge outreach and huge amount of interest for all of us living here to develop a code that all of us could live by. So at that time, all of us were more concerned about the right to farm. A lot of us had horses. Some of my neighbors ran cattle on their five acres, which was interesting. A lot of the kids had goats, rounded up dairy cows on the vacant lots that were behind us. We had a dairy. So it was a different, different environment. I understand change, and we have changed. And we have different interests and we have different, different uses for the rural area that none of us, when we worked on that general plan and municipal code, could even contemplate. So now we're here and all of us live here. It isn't just new people coming in and newcomers coming in. It's the old timers that still live here too. And there is a value in the rural area that just affords a different lifestyle for those of us, for those, those of you that might want to live out there. I talked last week about dark skies. The comment was, it's too late for dark skies here, we already have illumination. That's not true. I sent a copy of LA County that is working on trying to recapture dark skies for their habitat and their residents. So the rural area is unique, it is special. We talked about it last time. And I'm hoping that if in fact you have to go forward with residential standards, you're feeling that pressure to get past this, maybe we can convene some kind of a different group, an outreach group like we need, like everybody has talked about needing. The idea that they send a notice out to 500 feet, I miss a lot of those notices because, living on five acres, you don't get the notice. I mean, 500 feet here, they get it. None of the rest of us get it. So I think the city really knows it has to improve the outreach. It came up at one of the meetings of a rural development. And there was a thing where you were going to review outreach and get involved. And I think it's time to do that, because I do think all of us need to live together. Regulations help to really monitor all of our behaviors so that all of us can live here and enjoy where we live. And, you know, somebody said they wanted to put a basketball court out there. I think one of you said you, that's what you would envision living there. So that's it, okay, you want to do that. But the rest of us living around it still needs, need to have that. Why we move there, for peace, for nature, for other reasons. And I think we can do that. I think that that's incumbent on us. Christopher, thank you.
Thank you.
And Antonio?
Do we have another speaker? Oh, yes, Kathy Grudel, please.
Good evening. I've been here before. I do see that there's some progress on the lighting code. And so I thank you for that. More of what I'm interested in is a little bit of clarity on the proposed changes that you have. I know, I think you had mentioned that there is a 90-degree off on the lighting, but I, I don't understand where that 90-degree is from. Can you answer that? Can anybody answer that?
It will, after you, after you made your statement, we will see how to address any questions.
Okay, all right. Also in there, I noticed that it states it's single resident units and two-unit residential development. Nothing in there about ag. None of the ag residential?
Again.
Okay. The other thing I would like to have some clarity on is if these are freestanding light poles, which we're addressing with our neighbors who have 10 of the stadium lights up now, how, if they go in and request for above the 20 feet or the 12 to 20 feet, how many light poles are they going to be allowed to have? So. I think that was the only other questions I had. I again would appreciate that you take into consideration that we are rural neighborhood out there. We're not city dwelling. And that we do appreciate our darkness, our nighttime quiet, and that having 10 stadium lights shine into our property when they're on, on their soccer field, it, it's kind of negates the reason for moving out there and, and living on acreage. So that, I think that's it for me.
Thank you. Just to let you know, I mean, the genesis of all this was your initial meeting in December with this commission.
Yes, yes.
So we have looked into some of the things and we will address these, so thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, would that, would staff please address very briefly the 90-degree full cutoff and the full shielding, just for the record?
So it just, it means that you have the light bulb? And then you have a shielding over the light bulb? And it just means that it must be covered, the light bulb must be covered and not extend 90 degrees over the light shine? The would need to be covered to not extend over 90 degrees?
And the other quick question, I think, which she did ask was, which is covered in item 2B, is the illumination of 110-foot candle at the property?
Right. And then, and then also to, so, single-family resident, or single-family units and two-family units, we consider that in residential zones as well as ag residential zones?
And that is, I guess, the question I asked you during my staff meeting. Thank you. So I think those are the questions which had been raised. With that, other deliberations from the council?
I just have a question on something that Mrs. Grudel just brought up. Is there a limit of how many freestanding poles they can put in a, in the property?
If they're 12 feet or less, they're allowed by right, obviously. But then if they're 12 feet or more, up to 20 feet, that's something that would be reviewed during the minor design review process. Because we would look at the photometric plan, and if you have more lighting, then there's a chance that you would be going over, exceeding the foot candle.
Okay, thank you.
Chair, I just want to clarify, so even at the 12 feet, it's, it looks like they still would need to have the full cutoff?
Correct.
Okay.
Okay. Other thoughts? If not?
I did, I did have some chairs. Thank you. After listening to everyone speak, you know, I wanted to speak for, as someone who lives in the rural area and actually has some of these stadium lights. You know, people have different viewpoints and may, they may have different reasons to want to have these lights, whether it's to be able to see at night, cultural reasons, maybe there's some type of reason that they need to be able to see. I also moved out to the rural area to be able to enjoy, you know, dark skies as well. I don't, you know, I think that the light should be used responsibly. And I thank staff for these standards. I think these will definitely help improve the lighting. But outside of not intruding someone's property, I think that, you know, maybe we can still work to educate the community instead of forcing them to turn their lights off or not have stadium lights in the community. So I just wanted to make that comment, just as a different viewpoint.
Thank you. No, I think that's a good point. Education is always the key to most things. I have to apologize, we did close the public comment period. So if the commission has any, yes, please go ahead.
So at the last meeting, when we talked about this, I, I was really concerned on the other end, where you have a smaller lot and having these tall poles and the lights. And I appreciate the fact that we did continue this because it allowed more discussion with staff to kind of enhance my understanding of that process that you talked about earlier, that it isn't just going to be an easy putting up a pole and, and being able to have that light. There is significant cost involved in getting the, the study done, as well as meeting those standards. So that did alleviate, well, not totally alleviate, but at least mitigated some of the concerns that I had. And I feel a lot better about the standards as they exist.
And I have to say, I mean, given where we started, I think I do compliment the staff for putting together, again, based on a lot of other cities and jurisdictions, putting together a thing which is, again, not overly prescriptive, but allows us to meet the needs of most of the people. Other comments, questions?
Yeah. I still don't, don't see the necessity of having freestanding poles. And another one that I don't quite get is the ban lighting. I just, I'm not ready to vote yes on this one. So I'm going to have to vote no on it when we do.
So I'm ready to support this. I had one ask of staff in my briefing, and that was why the provision of ban lighting, if we could classify accent lighting and make a allowance for that accent lighting, but visible ban lighting would be, would not be permissible, right? Antonio, did, did I say that correctly?
I mean, based on the discussion we had at the last meeting, I think there was an example showing ban lighting for a house. It was more kind of exposed lighting instead of more of what we call a, I guess, a glow or halo effect. So we did look at that. Our code is kind of, could have been more clarified than it actually is. So we looked at that section of code where it talks about ban lighting. Our suggestion in looking at something like that for clarification and to kind of narrow down on what kind of ban lighting would be appropriate, the language that we looked at was neon tubing or ban lighting along building structures used in lieu of articulation is prohibited. So that clarifies the use of ban lighting. And then accent eve lighting, where the light source is not visible from any public right of way, is allowed. So it kind of, it prohibits some of the more obnoxious lighting where you're actually looking at the light source.
Right, exactly.
But it does allow a ban lighting where it's more of a glow effect.
Thank you. This was exactly the verbiage I was looking for. So with this suggested amendment, I would be in support of.
Do we have an example to see what that would look like?
It just was flashed on the screen, I think.
So we have, so there's an example on the left side. That's where you have exposed or exposed light source, visible light sources, where on the lower right, that's one where the light source is hidden. It's tucked underneath the eve and it's not visible from the public right of way.
So the one on the left would be prohibited?
That would be prohibited because it's not, because the light source is visible from the public right of way.
So the language, if you can flash that back up, please, the language you had just a moment ago?
Yeah.
So this is what it would. So that language will then be put in 23 dot 56 dot 050 or somewhere?
Yes, it would be in the prohibited lighting section.
Okay, thank you.
And when I make the motion, I'll refer to, with the amended suggestion, okay. So Chair Singa, ready to make a motion? All right, I move to adopt a resolution recommending that the city council find the amendments exempt from Sequa pursuant to State Sequel Guidelines Section 15061B3 and 15308, and approve the amendments to the Elk Grove Municipal Code relative to lighting standards for residential development, including the clarification of neon tubing and ban lighting and permissibility of accent leave eve lighting where the light source is not visible from any public right of way.
Okay, I am going to second the motion. And with that, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye? Any opposed?
Opposed.
Okay, so we have four in favor, one opposed, the motion carries. Thank you. We'll move on to regular agenda items. There are none, so we shall move forward with the director's report. I gather here the Development Services Director is now Mr. Christopher Jordan.
Good evening, Commissioners. Yep, so your, on the dais for you this evening. For August 15th, we have two items confirmed. We should have packets out for you either tomorrow or Monday. We're putting some finishing touches on a condition on one item. And then we are teeing up another item for September, the Allen Ranch Medical Building. We do have one item coming up for zoning administrator probably in early September. And for council matters, the amendments that you just talked about a moment ago for residential lighting will be on a council agenda in the future. We also are working on policy direction around the bars and breweries in Old Town and additional use permits pieces there, and that'll be at a future council agenda. So available for questions if you have them.
Questions for the Development Services Director?
Congratulations on your new role.
You all have beaten me to that, that wasn't the question, sorry. But moving right along, we will move to the planning, to Planning Commission matters. I would, given the chair's prerogative, I'd like to take this opportunity to welcome Christopher Jordan as the new Development Services Director. I think you all know Christopher has served with distinction as the Director of Strategic Planning and Innovation and as the zoning administrator. Well, three of us who joined the commission in 2021. I think our first interaction with Christopher was the 2021 Housing Element Update. And most recently with the new zoo, zoo at Elk Grove. And both documents were outstanding. And as an, and this is an indicator of the quality of work that he does. So it's a pleasure to have him here. I look forward to working with Christopher in his new role. And I am sure so do the other commissioners. with Christopher in his new role, and I am sure so do the other commissioners. If you would like to say a word, please, this is your golden opportunity.
Yeah, we had our conversation and welcome and looking forward to learning from you.
Congratulations, Christopher. Looking forward to working with you.
I think our chair covered it pretty well.
Okay, well.
Making Cal Poly proud.
Okay, so we are in Mustangland now, I gather. Okay. Thank you with that again, Christopher. Welcome to.
Kira's going to anchor the other side of the team for us, okay?
Chelsea, too. And Chelsea, yes.
She's also Cal Poly? Anybody else in the audience?
You're welcome, by the way.
Cal Poly, I mean. Okay, with that, any other planning commission matters?
You know, there was a lot of discussion about outreach, and I know we've talked about this before. And I'm not suggesting a presentation for the next meeting, but maybe sometime in the future, we can have a discussion about what the current process is and if we see any, any improvement that might be made in that. Because we kind of keep hearing the, the same kind of themes.
Yeah, so I can provide a little bit of clarity tonight. It's helpful to sort of think about outreach relative to two types of projects. You have city-initiated projects like we would have with, say, a large project that we're working on, maybe, you know, we've got a big general plan update or some sort of effort, like a housing element update. Those sort of work efforts because we manage them. They all occur through a city process. There is, you know, we have dedicated resources around outreach and engagement. We have certain pathways around that notification. We can structure our work plan in order to accommodate that. So there's sort of an avenue broadly addressed there. There are certain types of projects sometimes and certain time constraints that can come with the level of depth that we can actually get into with outreach and engagement. But by and large, bigger projects, we can do those sorts of things. On developer projects, that's where things get a lot more complicated. In some instances, we have been able to require certain outreach and engagement by classes or types of projects. Typically, it's on a neighborhood basis. So for instance, in the Triangle area, if you're coming in with a, this is the area that's bound by Bond, Bradshaw and Grantline. If you're out in that area proposing plan amendments, or some sort of big project out there, you're required to do some sort of outreach and engagement. And as we have a project that was kicking the tires the other day, and they've made it clear to them, hey, you need to go through and do something. When we have projects like an SB 35 project, there is a state mandated schedule about how those projects have to work through the process. And nowhere in the state law does it provide for a required outreach or engagement plan. There are certain steps we do around notification, like onsite noticing, signage that we're required to do for our local regulations. Those do apply in this case. So that would happen if there is a zoning administrator oversight hearing, if there's some sort of planning commission obligation, we would go through and do the notification. Candidly, though, a lot of the state regulations have turned from a discretionary process, where you would approve like a use permit or design review, into something that is essentially a, I don't quite say by right, but is more of a, you've got to go through and demonstrate to at a staff level that you've met all the requirements, and it's essentially a ministerial process. And so that oftentimes, that is what we are seeing more and more of is the rub from a public side of the expectation around a lot of engagement and a lot of dialogue around a project, whereas the timeframes that the state gives, the procedures the state obligates us to go through do not allow for, provide those sort of opportunities. So we try to do it where we can. Certainly, again, the noticing that we do, while it is the most basic level of outreach and engagement we can do, it is and oftentimes the only outreach and engagement that can often happen. But we do work to put notices on sites with contact information for the city, references to project numbers. Folks are welcome to come by anytime, call us. We have information up on the website, an interactive map where you can see the goings on of active applications, stuff that's in construction. So it's sort of a two-way street a little bit.
Thank you for that. That's really helpful. I'm just wondering, as part of the presentation of these type of projects where we know there's going to be that kind of sensitivity, maybe just, maybe not that, quite that much detail, but just maybe some education for the public about what we can, because we know these issues do keep coming up.
Yeah. So again, example, projects where we know, where definitely we can do that. For example, we have two affordable housing projects where the city is currently the property owner, working on disposing of them to developers. We went through a proposal process. The council selected those partners. We are obligating as part of our transaction with those developers that outreach and engagement happen. For a site in Old Town, I think we've had three meetings with another online one coming up next week. Ah, look at that, I got it right. And then for the second site, we just had the first round of outreach last month. And so there is, there are efforts that are happening around those where we can and can guide those, again, because we have more control over it, because of the city's involvement, either from an ownership standpoint, or we're leading the effort.
I mean, I strongly support Commissioner Poole and the request, I guess, in terms of, that's a comment I wrote as I was listening to people, how do we get more outreach? So even if it's not required by the state, I think there is a lot of frustration regarding SB 9, SB 35, et cetera, and for the lack of a better word, the overreach of the state. But it, that is what it is. But I think within that, we have to try and at least educate our folks as to where our hands are tied or your hands are tied, vis a vis SB 39 or any other state law, and the fact that we are listening. But again, they have to raise their voices at a level of Sacramento, I hate to put it that way. So thank you. Anything we can do to educate folks would be great. Okay? Any other comments as to regarding the planning commission matters?
Not about that, sir. I just would like to thank the, our police department is always here serving, and we never get a chance to thank him. Thank you for your service, guys.
Thank you.
Tito, thank you.
If there is.
I, I was going to ask, does it, does the city planning department have a social media handle? Do you have a resource that monitors like Community Threads on Nextdoor or EG Laguna News, I think is another social media hub?
No, the, with few exceptions, we have a unified social media account system that's run by the city's Public Information Office. We do coordinate where there's, again, city projects primarily, or just there's generally like a planning commission meeting or council meeting coming up, where notification or reminders about those events and activities will happen. If there's outreach for projects we're working on, we'll coordinate those so we can get our social media team in order to post those out. In terms of Nextdoor, they do some level of engagement out there in responding to some things that come up. I don't know specifically. I think it may be more on sort of the Facebook, Instagram side of things. I don't get too involved in that side. We've had some other resources over the years where we're able to sort of understand the dialogue that's happening out there and understanding, just sort of seeing what community sentiment is. And some of those resources can be helpful, too, that oftentimes, again, flare up for the type of projects you'd expect, or those that are already sort of top of mind for residents. That's the engagement we see online often.
So if there was an opportunity to, to follow a model, Officer Jimenez is the PD Outreach Officer, and he monitors threads on, on Nextdoor and will often provide factual information to a thread where it's kind of going off the rails. So I don't know if we have bandwidth to do something similar specifically for the planning department.
I think, well, with the Public Information Office, when something does come up and there's questions maybe are posed online or a necessity to provide some clarification, they do oftentimes will connect to departments that are specialists around that and get the clarity and able to respond to it. It certainly happens on occasion. Can't speak to the frequency, but I do know that it happens.
Just a thought. Thank you.
Anything else? Hearing none. And given that there are no other agenda items, the meeting is adjourned at 7:50. Thank you all.